Work session. The reason I'm doing that, that way the public can say what they want because they're here for a reason, say something in council, and we'll get you out there. And you know how long that discussion is going to take? I don't want to keep you guys waiting later. So I want your comments to be heard, and that's why you're here. Okay? Also, um, for some of the stuff, uh, it's not meaningful for our work, Captain. Um, so we're gonna have to do the assignment, so I'll give you the questions. So this is kind of my... Regular council meeting, December seventh, twenty twenty, and seven forty-eight.
All who live in the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice as one.
Roll call.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Uh, for the minutes?
Mister President, no changes. Motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes dated November second, sixteen, twenty twenty, and work session minutes being dated November second, sixteen, twenty twenty. Service state committee meeting minutes dated November second, twenty twenty. Sunday plane tour meeting is dated November second, twenty twenty. And finance committee meeting minutes dated November sixteen, twenty twenty, as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes. New partner, new patient from the department ahead. Anyone? Report to communication from the mayor.
Thank you, Mister President. Um, as you all are aware, that, uh, our governor, Mike DeWine Masters, they put us in Hawaii, it goes purple. And that announcement is probably inevitable beginning this Thursday. But I assume we would put the cloud pounding the purple, which means, as we talked about, it's in all of our protocols. Just I'm like, everybody aware that we will shut down the recreation center by wearing purple and limit the availability of, uh, people entering the building. We'll still conduct business, but we will be limiting, uh, the amount of people coming into, into the building. We will continue, if we are in purple, with your permission, Mister President, keeping all meetings in this, in this area, so we can maintain social distance and get residents in here to speak their mind and get a lot of equipment for their safety as well as ours. That's all, thank you, Mister President.
질문 and confirmation?
None received.
Communicating questions and questions?
Uh, under committee guidance, I would just like to let council know and forward a record that a letter from Hyden, Nelson L.L.C., regarding the citizens' coalition for betterment of heights and park development, forty-three Times Harris Road, S.A.R.C. And they are, just to paraphrase, uh, they are listing their objections to the citizens' coalition for betterment of heights confrontation which was down in the research agenda for this meeting. This will be added to the record for council meeting.
Anything else?
That's it.
Report from committees, Mister Goodman?
No reports.
Mister Wolf, that'll be a meeting services meeting on Friday, December eleventh, at five forty-five. The S.B. Willow Room, at the New York City, in, uh, October, December. That's all.
Mister Price?
Thank you, Mister President. BCA meeting, uh, being on the circuit the second was canceled due to enough item on the agenda. The next meeting will be January the sixth, following on the agenda when it is produced. Thank you, that's all.
Mister Dowdell? Three more texts, please. Miss Mike?
Um, yes, Mister President, the Shaker Commission met last week, and they also met this week. I can mention that we had, um, are completing. But, um, they are working on, um, discussing the true planning morals around the city of Hyden. They're discussing appropriate trees, citizens, how to advertise, and that's all. That's all.
Thank you. Mister Stone, no report this evening, sir.
Uh, planning commission will need this wine segment, service off, here with Jim. Mister House, that will be our plan. I mean, he had kind of, uh... Resident participation, November, February, today, the registered visual lines comment on the resolution and or ones that are pending, we need to hear enough.
See, you know, one, resident, resident in twenty twenty, one eighty-three, for first reading?
Mister President, Mister Wolf, motion to suspend council roles in resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-three.
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
The residents mix up in the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two, the component funding program ran for five hundred and research of the city of Hyden Road, involving members of the East project for corporations and the city of Hyden.
Mister President, who will motion to adapt resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-three?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Yeah.
Resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-four, for first reading?
Mister President, who will motion to adapt, uh, suspend council roles in resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-four?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
A resolution, many resolutions, two thousand nineteen, the F ninety-one, regarding the agreement between the city of Hyden and the Joyce Center, at the main LLC. With respect to the state regarding the twenty, the city of Hyden, we require right of...
Mister Wolf, motion to adapt resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-four?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Yeah.
Resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-five, for first reading?
Mister President, who will motion to suspend council roles in resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-five?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Yeah. A resolution, not going to the mayor's chambers, or the mayor's state, for the city of Hyden Heights and the head office, and the water park, the basement. And the north east, where the city of Chatham, the citizens, they will like, will have that ready to go to the city of Hyden, to require a number.
Who will motion to adapt resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-five?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-six, for first reading?
Mister President, who will motion to suspend council roles in resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-six?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
A resolution, resolution, particularly on that decision, to adapt also three oh eight, having referred to as the first responders ETS, the left-hand stills, that's by state of the time, and the city of Hyden, we require a number.
Who will motion to adapt resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-six?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-seven, for first reading?
Mister President, who will motion to suspend council roles in resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-seven?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
The residents have rights and mayers to enter and surrender to the city of Hyden Heights and sign a document, say, for special needs assessment, for the fire department in the city of Hyden Heights and require a number.
Who will motion to adapt resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-seven?
Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes. One minute, one forty-one, twenty twenty, the second, any more?
The ordinance to make corporations to bring expenses to the city of Hyden Heights had a power of state of the matter for your twenty twenty, my right of rights.
Mister President, this is a motion to the planning commission's recommendation to approve plan pool in the lobby, I said, in case number twenty twenty, C twenty-one. It's understanding that worktops, they would provide and the unit timing, both purpose discussion and planning commission duty, and final call, or, or chosen by the advocate approved by planning building of our company, so... Second.
Second, yeah. Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes. Motion to the planning commission's recommendation to approve the two call, in case number twenty twenty, C twenty-two, and to add the, which means H.O.K. comment or a deconstruction, then no concrete or structure can be built within fifteen feet of the wood. So move. Second.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes. Discussion?
Uh, just wanted to thank the representative, uh, seven, uh, for, uh, for our, uh...
Mr. Wolf?
Did those last tonight, rest in peace?
Mister Goodman? Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, gentlemen, my students, and you, 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 you.
If anything, the, uh, seven, uh, on the, uh, four, two, uh, that may even show, uh, the president.
Yeah, I got. Uh, thanks, also, uh, sir. Councils now open to residents?
Mister President, we have the students available to be, uh, taken out.
Students, if you come over, say your name, class, teacher, and question, whatever.
Mister President, the company.
Is this your name?
I'm Laura Regan.
What class are you in?
Um, Mister Brennan, I'm, uh, class.
My name is Grace Reagan, and I heard for the same reason Mister Brennan's going class.
I'm Maria Chouin, and I'm in the...
My class, I'm, uh, uh... Motion to recess, council meeting, uh...
Mister President? Uh, her one, you know, six, three, long, zero, uh... I just want to make it together, happy, uh, my band, and all of us, uh, uh, before the planning, if I can, uh, get it.
Yes, I'm, uh, uh, uh...
Yeah, cool.
There you go. Well... So, um, um, motion to recess, council meeting, for the work session. So move.
Mr. Rice, Mr. Paul? Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mister Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes. Council, board, session, December seventh, twenty twenty, and three oh two. Roll call.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mister Goodwin?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
You gotta hear it.
Yeah.
Here.
Mayor Ella, uh, now, uh, for the, uh, great, gee, quiet.
For, uh, discussion, for, for, for sure.
Mister President, the first item on the list is a, uh, here, in connection with the, uh, prior, another city service, this is, believe it myself, for fuel, and this is to accept the, uh, second year renewal in a two-year bid, uh, for all the, the consortium, also through, uh, through, uh, through, uh, for, uh, for, uh... for, uh, for, uh, council, uh, and, uh... Second item is the purchase of a tractor. Uh, this, this would be for, for roll along, knowing, this would be for, uh, in the different time, we had two different, uh, ways to sell, uh, and play on the front, and the back door, depending on what football we were, what kind of soda was, uh, we were buying. Uh, in the summertime, we were going to get, uh, civil, uh, by law, and passing for it to help us with the, uh, basic needs. I would think we would feel a lot of these, uh, this tractor, uh, for, uh, on its last use.
How about?
I, I have a question, uh, uh, I, when I bring it up, uh, in the, uh, display of what exactly it is and what's the cost on it, it's a big water, it's a big rest, and...
It's being, uh, from a purchasing consortium called Sourcewell, is being, was found on the state vehicles. Um, we did look at a variety of vendors, and we did a variety of tractors, and we did, the one we were buying is a pro company called Penetrack, who are the leader in, in the industry for the silver tractor. Uh, we also look at Senator, that's very competitive, uh, the management of that, we also got a mechanic who opened up, and, uh, he managed, and, uh, in, uh, in, uh...
And what, what is the cost on it, Dean?
It's forty-six, one eight four.
Just, uh, just something in the picture, this, this would be, you know, we're managing, you're not, you know, John Deere, not only has a state price, and I got a program in the community where we buy a new unit, and every year we trade it in, and it only a thousand dollars, and we do a new unit every year. It's a program that some John Deere dealers have, so if we ever wanted to make that type of investment on a, uh, a track loader, uh, a mini excavator, or a tractor, that's what they will cover. Then, you know, I, it takes to trade every year, and just make a thousand dollars. That way you never have to make it, and never have to change the oil. So just something to keep in mind, this, never, uh, looking at that cost, from that, this, we don't need, you know, a...
Questions? Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. President, thank you. Chief?
By the way, some information, this is a five, or a large, like, part of the...
Who puts that up, I can, um, thank you. Mister House?
Uh, first item I have, we, uh, I did discuss it the last night, it's gonna be, and that was, uh, changing the riverway on the property, fashion insurance, eighteen first, January first. Would that be a three-month extension? The cost of that is thirty-two, three nineteen, which is slightly more than, uh, twenty-five percent of what our, uh, attorney was last year, and the difference is just due to, you know, few, few extra vehicles away, and, uh, with that, that actual, uh, conference, and, uh, and, uh...
Next item I have is, uh, we said the equivalent, this is establishing three property, uh, equipment, uh, patent, and corporate costs, this was something that was recommended by the others. There's no money in the, uh, cost.
We'll put that up.
Uh, next item is the, in the mayor's court, uh, they have two checking acts. Uh, currently, with the last item, there was a discrepancy in the amount of money that's in those bank accounts versus the court records. Actually, there was more money in those accounts than what, uh, the court records showed, that should have. So the audit was a record of the council, that's, uh, authorization, uh, authorizing a court joint to see the check to the general, uh, uh...
Anything to discuss on this?
Uh, next item, last year, uh, council authorized in advance, uh, five point one hundred, twenty-five thousand from the general fund, to shoot that, my group of fund. What I recommend now is the green classified advance, to transfer, and keep that money in the shoot back.
Council, we, uh, we, uh...
Um, next item, uh, with the care trap money the city received, uh, one of the things that we were allowing you that money for, which is the easiest in the news, for public safety, the waves, and, uh, that's, uh, if you get into summer weather, you can always get in, with the skills, whether or not it's appropriate use. Uh, U.S. statute, I think, it may appear, so that they're just using, uh, no, for reflection, but some, uh, for some of the finance records are, uh, the state operators now are, uh, in, uh, the, uh, the, uh...
Anything more questions?
Hey, one. Eighteen thousand total amount, will speak to the city, uh, the parent.
Uh, one point, forty-five thousand, please, change.
Thank you, sir.
So, uh, we... You're, uh, uh, uh...
Yeah, software solution, this is the animation agreement. Uh, same with the Vermont system, it's actually, Vermont system is mainly streaming for the recreation department software. And then, uh, the final item that I have is, the reverse vote allowed us to establish, uh, special round fund to basically reserve, set aside, going to, uh, for retirement payouts, for, the city has, uh, about forty percent of the people that have been, uh, uh, for years of experience. The current dollar value of the payout, I think, about nine, uh, fifty thousand. What I would like to do is create this reserve fund, and then start on that, probably, in the next, uh, month.
How you doing? Council? Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, uh, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, um, we did the invoice file, we have the agreement with invoice file. They used chase back to the process, there was no cost to this agreement, but there was a lot of, you know, chasing from their designs, uh, from, uh, council, uh, uh...
Engineer, uh... Is he on the last seat? Anyway? The mayor's city, uh, fifty?
Okay, the first one. So, the first one is that, during, uh, the environmental studies, the long, uh, project, for your, uh, long, uh... It's just over ten thousand hours, for, uh, all, uh, basis, the initial eight hours, and it would probably go under ten thousand, right, so, uh, you, 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 uh, situation, anyway, so... This will be for the environment, of course, uh, any questions?
No.
This is for, sir, uh, veterans?
We're not sure of the time in the project. If they're still in design, or, okay, if they're still in the environment, I think we will start, uh, the construction. Mister Yamnasi must be getting the environment effect, uh, probably, in the next couple months, with, uh, seeing... Okay, you start.
Eighteen, please.
How do you, uh, weigh this, uh, security number, as we use the, uh, your, uh, crack seal, uh, monitoring here, so, uh, other, uh, like, uh, situations, and, so, it's, uh, do you really think it's...
I can see, pardon, uh, I'm gonna be, uh, software, uh, version, is a, uh, software that can, uh, engineer part, go, uh, part, uh, part, uh, this is, uh, part, uh, uh, not, uh, not, uh, so, uh, all, uh, so, uh, uh...
Council, you're questioning, uh, for, for, uh, uh...
And, uh, there is this, uh, uh, software, so, G.I.S. software, uh, uh, all about, uh, 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 uh...
Is this software also a trick, like, when they follow, and, uh, playing, and, uh, 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 uh...
I think, you know, I, uh, the news, man, everywhere, uh, uh, so, they're using most simulation, uh, uh, honestly, they're down, and they're using golden, uh, golden part, software, and part, uh, 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 so, uh, all, uh, uh, uh... So, uh, 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 uh...
All right. Number fifty?
So, again, this is part of the, the rolling, uh, ice, and, uh, uh, I have to be honest, Mister President, and I read the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, um, I don't have all the answers to the question, so, again, if you have any questions, you, uh, maybe, if, uh, those, uh, city, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... I can't really, uh, 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 uh...
Okay. So, so, uh, we're gonna discuss, uh, hold on, uh, for, uh, uh, anybody, uh, has any part of this, uh, next? Two weeks, uh, 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 uh...
Yeah.
All right. Who wants to talk to me?
Actually, we're so, uh, uh...
The reason we put, uh, uh, was, you know, one state's, uh, 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 and, uh, 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 we wanted to have a few teachers, we, uh, we wanted to discuss, we had few answers. Prior to, uh, any, uh, uh, we, uh, 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 uh...
Tom, you want to speak, uh, number eight? It's not buzzing, uh...
Uh, we have a discussion, uh, uh, uh...
Tom, will you please speak right into your mic?
Just, uh, we go. I just received a email that has, uh, my colleagues, the Citizens Coalition for Betterment of Heights. Um, yeah, very, uh, several questions, and they would like to, they just city review, uh, please answer. And, uh, I would hope that you should, building commissioner, or, uh, your, uh, uh, discussed it further.
Mister President, uh, building commissioner is home quarantined because of close contact with COVID, and I got to be honest, I got to, uh, 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 here this evening, so...
Can we submit our questions to, can we submit our questions to the department head and advocate and the, uh, this, uh, Tuesday, so that everyone has, uh, a, uh, 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 to do it?
Yeah.
Is it best to, uh, get the, uh, Helen, and she, uh, uh, them, or do you mind us, uh, uh?
Mister President?
Uh, it was...
Tom, might you just hold up that piece of paper, is that what was submitted to all of us by the... Again, uh, we had a discussion on that, a lot of that, those questions are not for the city, they're for the advocate. Um, there are questions, and again, we've talked with them, we've heard from the residents, but those are questions that only the advocate, some of those questions, only the advocate can answer, about doing some of the certain things that some of the, the citizens are requesting, see, uh... So, we'd be happy to go over it at length, but some of those questions will have to be answered by the advocate. Because the city can't make somebody do something as an, actually applied to do something, if you understand what I'm saying. over it at length, but some of those questions will have to be answered by the applicant, because the city can't make somebody do something as, uh, actually applied to do something, if you understand what I'm saying.
Mr. President, also about, um, a number of emails, all of us, I will certainly, uh, all the same emails, and I'm, 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 uh, well, I think some, I would, uh, there, some are for, for the applicants, from, uh, the things, but, I think, you know, uh, 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 so, coming in, uh, uh, today.
Mayor, can I ask that, there are those, uh, the emails that the city, and, uh, take out a lot of times, and all, uh, so, to get answers to some of them, what would you want to do, give answers to the residents, and if it's a part of it, so, they know that, uh, is, is, uh, should be, uh, uh.
Yeah, I think we are very positive of the fact of what's going on, but there are several questions coming in from several different people, asking things that, some things we've just, we can't answer, because we're not the person applying, we're just the body, receiving the information from an applicant, whether it's Harris Row, or Mr. Perola on Town Center Drive, so, there's some things that we can't answer, some things we understand, and some things that the applicant, we have to talk about, doing as well, so, we'll try to read through all that volume of information, and try, and try to get, uh, something out to everybody, including the people on the email list as well.
And I, I would appreciate that, and, uh, 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 so, we'll wait for those, uh, uh. Mr. Washerball? On three, folks? Anybody?
This is just a continuation of the transportation agreement, everything is the same, um, nothing has changed since the day.
Okay, we'll put that up for, uh. Is this time, uh, residents, or, uh, station, uh, have any questions? There, uh, 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 any, uh, 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 uh.
Um, I just wanted to briefly, uh, just address that, uh, uh, that we spoke about, the concern for, uh, uh, development, um, so, the intent of, um, of all submitted, and, and this, again, these concerns, and requests put together by, uh, a, a large group of people, um, the, uh, the intent of this was to gain your support, and your advocacy, uh, with the, the developer, so, I think some of these items are simple questions that need answered by the developer, I'd agree, uh, some of them, I think, are more, uh, directed towards, um, the, the city, asking if, uh, if there's some additional, uh, new buildings, and that, uh, who agrees with additional new buildings, uh, 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 and then some are probably things that are not, where this is not absolutely required for developers to do, but that's, again, the, or, uh, for your support, um, these are things that are really important to us, um, and, uh, and, and to, uh, apply some, or, or, I'm sorry, help us negotiate asking to, to, to get the, the best, uh, the best help for, uh, for, uh, that's really what we're asking, and that's the intent of, of that, uh.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, with the, uh, uh, what do you make, uh?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I, I actually, I submitted this, uh, uh, for, uh, December, uh, to, uh, and, uh, and forwarded to, uh, to, to quite a few, uh, folks, including, I believe, the planning commission, and to, um, Mr. Yamanasi, and, uh, uh, for, uh, for.
Are you saying, you're asking, the applicant, who's our names? And you all have a list of those names?
So, so, that's actually a, a really, really good point, um, the, uh, I guess, uh, we're, maybe, all rookie, at, at this, and, uh, our viewpoint was that we shouldn't be negotiating, uh, private details with, uh, with the developer, that we should work through, um, the city resources, um, I wouldn't think that, uh, our opinion was that, uh, Mr. Yamanasi, uh, 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 kind of around him, to ask for things to be changed, and, uh, plans and different engineering things, and so we felt it was best for, for, for the city, and, again, get your understanding and, uh, and agreement, and advocacy for, for us, uh, to, to push that more, uh, than, than, uh, private, uh.
Well, we, you know, the city is trying to, uh, 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 we, uh, 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 the property, with developers, uh, 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 uh.
I'm sorry, I, 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 uh, discussion, but, uh, just as I think it's important to have, the city, uh, uh, we have the, uh, uh.
Oh.
So, we, uh, uh.
Any other questions? For transparency, too, uh, uh, Mr. Yamanasi, we, we, uh, 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 different themes, uh, 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 uh,
Certainly, and, and I think that's important to you, because I, I, I didn't receive, uh, some communication this past week from, uh, an attorney of, uh, Miami developer, and, uh, questions that they asked, and I think we're maybe a little off course of what we were asking for, so they may need some, uh, 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 uh.
Okay, there. I think that's, uh. Anyone else? Council, uh, discussion, Mr. Price?
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf, done? Uh, Cleveland? Mr. Don, Captain? Mr. Bonner? Mr. Jalisco? I ended up, uh, uh, we need to, uh, 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 uh. Um, at this point, we're in, uh, 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 session.